Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the county council today is August 8, 2017. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, the prayer and taking a moment of silence for military service.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, hallowed be thy name. The vacuum of heaven that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread and to give us our trust in Jesus as we give those who trust in Jesus against us. And we do not have to addiction but deliver us from evil. The highest of heaven, the Father and the Lord, our covenant.
Thank you. The first person to be called will be Mr. Beal.
Present.
Mrs. Serry.
Present.
Beth Gilman.
Present.
Mary Charlie.
Present.
Margaret Phillips.
Present.
Present.
The council has received the special meeting minutes dated May 12, 2017, the regular meeting minutes dated May 23, 2017, and also the June 13, 2017. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of your revenue? Mr. Phillips, thank you. All in a favor.
Aye.
The minutes stand approved. The chair notes of certification has been received regarding compliance with the rules and documentation of the survey. This evening we have no guest presentation. And we will now move to other comments. Jasmine Clark, 117th and 33rd.
As we've all probably seen, the NOAA forecast for the harmful alba bloom is projected to be heavy or moderate. And I looked at the city's website this morning and the water quality tab hasn't been updated since October of 2016. And in light of being proactive, if we could get those up because once that bloom gets, if there is one and it gets this way, that's going to be really important for the safety of the constituents. So let's all have.
Thank you. Mike Snyder, 203rd.
Good evening, everyone. Everybody likes chicken, don't they? I'm here because I do the short straw. Everybody else at the fire station is training and I didn't realize there wasn't any air conditioning. But this Sunday, I forgot about it. This Sunday is the Portland Firefighters Association Annual Chicken Barbecue. I have some of the remaining tickets in my hand. They're $9 each. I know many of you already have them, but if you tell your family, friends, associates, enemies, we'll be serving from 11 to 2 o'clock at the fire station, 1755 East State Street. Dine in or carry out. Even if you don't have a chicken dinner, stop by, see your fire station. The guys and gals down there would love to show you the equipment, the gear, everything that they have. There's always a saying down there, every single person in the city of Port Clinton will have to deal with the Port Clinton Fire Department at one point in your life, whether good or bad. So you might as well come down and see what's down there. Again, $9 each. We're only selling 700 tickets. There's a limited quantity available. They're counting right now. These are the ones that I have not sold yet, so I'll be happy to sell them to you. Thank you. Enjoy.
Thank you. Gary Philbin, 113rd.
Yeah, I've got a question there for the mayor. What are the circumstances behind Trevor Johnson being fired?
Gary, that's an employee employment relations. I wrote my comment on an employee for the city.
I talked to somebody today and they brought it up on the internet and they showed me that a copy of the thing that they sent Mr. Wilber. And it does not say that like a father and son can't be on the same thing. It's up to the city's discretion if they want to do that. That's what they said. That's what was on there.
What he's talking about, I don't know what he's saying.
And I was over to Shorty over here and Shorty had it on there and he showed it to me. And I said, well, I'll find out. I'll ask him about conflict. I bought it and because I thought he was doing a good job.
He was doing a great job.
And he was working with me with the railroad trying to get these things done. And I happened to run into a guy coming down there checking the railroad at Adam Street yesterday. And I asked him about it. And he said, oh, well, I don't know. He says, all we care about is the rails. He said, I said, what about all this brush hanging over the side there and over the signs or vines hanging over the clearance thing for the traffic for trucks? And he said, that's not up to me. He said, that's up to the city. Is that the city property? If I'm more concerned, he says, all we care about is above the, on top of the tracks. He wants on the side of the tracks. He says, I told him, I said, well, we have a bunch I built a minute. I told him before, a bunch I built a minute and cleaned these all off right here. And that, and he even took some dead trees down that were going to fall on some houses. And they said that, he said, well, they've changed now because they, they changed the way they're doing things. And I guess Trevor was talking to them and getting things set up to where they were going to, because behind Ruth Ann's house, that big brush pile there, that's all falling over, stuff hanging on the wires up there and vines are growing on the wires and tree branches falling down and stuff. And he said, that belongs to the railroad. And he said, I'll see if I can't get somebody to do something about this.
Well, we have, I bet with that guy, me and Trevor both did. We drove around behind there and he was supposed to get us a memorandium of understanding, which he has not gotten to us yet. The only thing that's gotten to us was something about painting of the underpasses.
Right.
And they do own 50 foot from the rail. We do not go on that property.
And so this guy here now, he told me that, he says, I know they told us before when they started off behind Ruth Ann's house here and the sumac growing down in the yard there, they said, you can go up the side, but we don't want you on top of that track. We take you on top of that track, he said, we'll throw you in jail. But he said, the side here, you want to put that brush off the side here, fine, go ahead and do it. Because we don't have the time to do that. All we take here is the rail.
Yeah, we take, it's their properties.
And I said, people can't even see, see the trucks are getting, vines are getting to where trucks that go on Fulton Street is crawling down on there. You can't even tell what the clearance is. And if it gets too bad, then somebody, Trevor, they're going under there, they're going to get hung up again. And I'd rather not see that because that could be causing, somebody else could get hurt. And while I was working with Trevor on that, trying to get this all done, so now being seen is not going to be there, I'm back to square one, zero.
No, we're still working on it. We're waiting for the memorandium of understanding from the road.
Oh, okay.
I just told you that.
Right.
I mean, I met with the guy, the government liaison came down. And we met with him and he's going to give us a memorandium of understanding, which will be forwarded to Mr. Wilber.
Right, that we can take that brush off the side here.
Yep. Because I was, I wanted to do State Street.
Yeah.
That's the biggest.
Well, now move to the man's report.
As you've seen, Fulton Street's paving is done. That section in front of Bert Johnson's house and by the bigger hospital, that's all done. Wetlands are still being mowed. They had to pull off today to do a funeral. So hopefully they're going to get back on that Thursday and Friday. If we can get that done, it's not too wet. Sidewalks of Madison Street, you guys noticed the cored and three cores. The center section that they cored first is the ADA compliant five foot. The, going from the sidewalk to the building, they cored that separate so that they can match the contour of the building. And then from the sidewalk to the curb, so that they can match the curb height and the The, I did have a couple of comments on Mary's Blossom Shops, poles, why they're not down. ODOT made that decision. They were grandfathered in. And if anything ever has been, has to be done to that back four poles, they have to be removed and not go back in. And the revitalization of downtown has been going great. We will continue. And I want to continue the relationship I have with council to keep that facility moving forward. Thank you.
The auditor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Just two things. The month end reports for the month of July 2017 were sent out, I believe, on August 1st. So please let me know if you have any questions or if you have any secrets. Additionally, late last week, I received, they completed the audit that was done by the State of Ohio Inbound Auditors Report for the period ending December 31, 2016. My goal is to eventually put that on the website and it's also available for you in my office at 8 o'clock.
Thank you. The treasurer's report.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The annual bed tax report for tonight is $65,603 each.
Thank you. A lot of rockers reported. The case chaser report.
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Entire chief of the train. And which correspondent? Just a lot this evening. As the auditor mentioned, we received the month end reports dated July, or excuse me, July 1st, 2017. We also received the laws, rules, and work expense meeting minutes dated July 23, 2017. Do I have a motion to approve? Federal Attorney. Thank you. Senator Freeman, thank you. Hold on a second.
Aye.
Also, we also received a letter from Community Support Services, which is bringing the national model of Project Connect to Ottawa County in the fall of this year. Project Connect is a one-day location that provides opportunities for individuals and families to receive services and information that have historically created barriers to health, well-being, and overall safety. The targeted population is directed to households with critical levels of financial resources, the senior population, the medically uninsured, families with hungry children, and homeless individuals. The focus of the event is health, safety, and senior services. The event is scheduled for Friday, October 20, 2017, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And it will be located at the Sutton Center at 1848 East Carey Street, which is south of the Health Department and west of the Salvation Army. Some of the services will be available include medical and anal vision scans, gap education for services, auto weight scans, elder youth protection, public and unregulated utility information, elder law, health insurance, home development, how to care of the community, project lifesaver, children's safety, dedication CFS, the pain nine unit, and drug counseling support. And employment, all types for seniors as well as for individuals with disabilities. Again, that is October 20, this Friday, for 9:00. We also received a letter from the Port Clinton Lighthouse Conservancy. Dear Madam President, that appends to the council, the Port Clinton Lighthouse Conservancy Board and its 300 members wanted to provide an update. And I just wanted to provide this letter. Since it first opened to the general public for tours on May 26, 2017, a total of 1,128 people have toured the lighthouse, even though only opened three days out of seven. A very many of the visitors were from out of town and many of those said that it was the lighthouse that drew them to the city. The Conservancy held its first lighthouse festival this Saturday, scheduled to go inside the National Lighthouse Stadium. And the resounding success with positive comments from all involved. We fully anticipate this event will grow in size in years to come and will become a permanent fixture on the state campus. The Conservancy continues to enhance the area around the lighthouse. Five memorial benches have been installed in the media vicinity as well as informational signage that provides a brief history of the lighthouse and the maritime heritage behind it. Plans for further enhancements previously reached to members of council and the mayor's office are continuing. The Conservancy has met with architects and other planners and is currently working with City Attorney to craft a license agreement with proposed Peters Boat House, which will require your approval. We hope to begin construction of the boat house at an indoor location this winter and at a place that the repose and the conference will discuss. Structure in addition to providing a fuller historical context for the lighthouse and serving as a repository for lighthouse history will eliminate the need for a tent on the site. Overall, these upgrades will further enhance the community of the park while creating a more vibrant experience for the seniors and park members. We thank you for your continued efforts. We thank you for your continued support for our efforts. We are confident that this valuable support will be rewarded with a more attractive waterfront and in-depth tourism doctors. Also, Mr. Peterson, the Chicken Barbecue will be Monday, August 13, from 11 to 2 at the fire station. Please sign them before you receive your ticket. Do I have a motion to approve the read? Thank you. The looks taken, all in a favor.
Aye.
Correspondents. Now move to the readings of ordinance resolution. Will the court please read by title and summary only, ordinance 16-17. Ordinance 16-17, ordinance leveling assessment for sidewalks considered to be cut and authorized for driving here. Council should take any action on 16-17.
Madam President. Move the council retain and rotate plot for 16-17.
Mrs. Serry, thank you. Any other questions? Will the court please call the board? Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mrs. Serry?
Yes.
Mary Charlie?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Mary Charlie?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Mary Charlie?
Yes.
Ordinance 16-17 has been adopted. Moving to the second reading of ordinance resolution. Will the court please read by title and summary only, ordinance 19-17. Ordinance 19-17, ordinance authorized by the director of safety service to prepare incident applications to participate in high level work submission, state capital improvement, and for local transportation, for control programs, and exit contracts and requirements prepared. Council should take any action on 19-17. Seeing none?
No. Mr. Peterson?
Oh, it's okay. I just wanted to thank Mrs. Gilman and Mr. Beal for their questions that they asked and if anybody else would have any similar questions with regards to the OPWC funding fire away. I brought my agent, Mr. Weehink O'Neal. He has 40 years of experience compared to my one, so.
In that case, I can't pass out, Mr. Peterson.
Yes, sir.
I think my first question was, what were the plans, financing and structuralizing, aesthetic wise for the sidewalks? And funding would be included in the small cities for sidewalk?
Yes, in the application, it has, it has sidewalk replacement in the small city application.
My second question was about the timeline. You said we give feedback, have the district subcommittee meets, and they'll determine the project, and they'll give an idea of what month that would be.
The district?
September. The subcommittee of the county is September. The district will be the end of October, early November.
Thank you. Thank you, Agent.
The complete application has to be submitted to the county by September 8. We'll be working with a consultant firm to put that application together.
So you would say this is time sensitive?
I didn't hear what you said.
So you would say this is time sensitive to get everything together and...
Prior to, I mean, prior to the application being due, we'd like to see that the ordinance is passed. I mean, it's, I don't want to say it's...
It's necessary.
It is necessary. So, I don't want to say it's not necessary.
We'd be fine if it's passed at the next council meeting.
Mr. Peterson, my last question was about the ending of the Madison Street project and when this, as soon as this can start, describe that.
Substantial completion for the Madison Street project will be November 30 with final completion being December 29 for the Madison Street project. With that being stated, depending on what engineering firm we use, we're probably going to be in discussions with that on what would be the best way to approach when the small city funds are available. There is an opportunity from the letter that was sent to the Safety Service Director that it could be either state fiscal year 2019 or state fiscal year 2020. But it's guaranteed for 2020, but the local programs manager or the state programs manager would have that answer and that's Nicole Wade. And I do have a phone call in to her at this night.
So best case scenario would be fiscal year, state fiscal year 19 starts July 1 of 18. And we're not going to start a reconstruction project middle of the year, just give them what we've done for downtown.
With...
For, right?
With OPWC funding, the funds will be available if we apply for them this September. The funds would be available July 8?
July 1.
July 1. July 1, 2018. At that time, you have 18 months to use those funds. So it kind of gives you a little bit of a window, but I think you get, and correct me if I'm wrong, Walter, you get priority points if you have, if you have everything ready to go, you know, as the funds are available. I believe that's the case.
The big question that comes into play, are we dealing with ODOT money in 2000 or fiscal year 19 or fiscal year 20? If we're doing ODOT money in 19, then we have to do the water and sewer in the end of 18 in order to do the road reconstruction in 19. If we're playing with 2020, then we have a little more flexibility of when we do the water and sewer work and then when we do the road reconstruction work. So until Nicole Wade tells us, you're going to have the money in 19 or going to have the money in 20, we're kind of trying to juggle walls here and try to figure out which is the best way to go.
I understand it's up to them. What's your, what's your desire? What do you think would be best?
I'd like to get it done as soon as we can because it's cheaper to do it quicker at this point than wait another year and see what inflation does and everything else. So if I could get it done in 2019, I'd just soon do that than wait till 2020.
I'll concur.
Approved. Thank you. What's the length of that Perry the 3rd?
I want to say around 1,100 feet, if I'm not mistaken, from Perry the 3rd of water line replacement. And we haven't talked specifically if we want to go underneath the railroad with water or sewer. I mean, looking at it on an infrastructure standpoint, we did go under the Madison Street with water. We have gone under Fulton Street with water and re-lined the sewer. So I mean, you're looking at probably two out of the four overpasses now have been, do have total or brand new infrastructure. So, I mean, we might want to entertain that.
Are we looking at in front of the hospital, 6 to 7?
We did some, we...
Well, no, I understand we did that.
No, we did, no, we, we applied for small cities money for that project also.
End with this?
Not end with this. It was a total separate application. It's just, we were funded for Jefferson Street. And I believe the asphalt rating on Jefferson Street is actually worse than what it is in the hospital, which is hard to believe, but I believe it is. And I don't quote me on that, but I believe it is.
What we did here is we put Fulton Street with the rest of the second as one project, submitted it and submitted Jefferson Street. And they funded Jefferson Street. We tried two years, two times in a row for Fulton. We'll take, just the infrastructure around Jefferson Street was put in in 1896. That sewer trunk.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? And I do want to apologize here because I did, Mr. Peterson, because I did ask you to come this evening. I had to ask, I didn't see you sitting here. So it was kind of a sight out of mind. So my apologies. And I think you should be able to...
I'm a small one statured, it's okay. Don't with it all my life.
No further questions, so, helpful? Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
Council should take any action on ordinance 19-17. Seeing none, ordinance 19-17 will be moved to its third reading at our next regular council meeting on August 22, 2017. We have no new reading this evening, only two hundred and forty-four. Start. Thank you, Madam President. Paul, the cause of this ordinance is again changing work on the, or is it work on the building that we go on? Um, that's why I see, Ms. Gilman and I have to, Mr. Philbin's office at the same time. I told you what, to build about the, any some papers of information you had, something realistic, like ten pages for this ordinance. It's time sensitive and we really think it's more important to, um, I have been taking pictures of town. Early day, quite good, it's four days, we don't have this much time, so I've had a lot of the comments given to me on Facebook or his personal screen, saying, could I get the extra material? You look at Mr. Beal's shirt, Mr. Philbin's shirt, they're roughly the color of the sewer lines that were put in downtown for brown. Dark blue, that's potable water, and extremely blunt, so this is a lot of red on the pavement. And I'm also wearing my pink vest, which I received the last time. And I do appreciate that and I ask, why wears your vest? But I do appreciate, um, the house I have, please, there is the Dr. McAllen, estimated Bloomville, and Buckeye, estimated Perry's, mostly in the circuit. Bloomville, right, and the great ones you guys talk about. Very, that's all. That's all. The gentleman, State President.
I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware, on August thirty-first, there's a event at the courthouse involving silhouettes to raise awareness for opioid addiction. It's all over Facebook, people have posted it, there's going to be a large tour of the living house that day. It's a very strong visual impact, silhouettes will also be around the county, all the areas, high schools. I don't know if we're all involved in that, but I think, first, I think, there's a lot of different groups involved, and people are putting this in there. Pretty powerful, a lot of people worried about opioid addiction, and we've been thinking, we'll turn this one support. And if we're, um, if they can, um, move it through early.
There's a couple items, uh, the services meeting for eight fifteen is canceled, I'll be out of town. Pre-commission is looking into, uh, downtown, the majority of us do. We are looking into putting some pods downtown. Hopefully, at least for square ground, we, the mayor said in our meeting today, folks are investigating that. We're not going to go ground yet or square, but there are a few species of trees we can put, put into the pods, so. No, I'm going to be honest, we're not happy about it, but at least we're going to have trees down the aisle. Um, we, I, I think it makes the world of difference, the little Second Street, and it's beautiful road, it's a sidewalk, but just, really just. Second Street too. Right, oh, yeah, right, but I'm just saying, Second Street is really misses. Just the trees. But, uh, we'll have more information this time as well. That's all I have to thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I want to thank Portland Main Street and the Chamber of Congress who have the lower pods going down the main street. They've been, um, really, really good the last couple of years, so, kudos to them. Finance Committee, meet August fifteenth here at the City Hall at six thirty. I wanted to talk about trees too. So can someone describe the process that went into allowing counties to remove the select, uh, street trees on that block?
Well, I came in, I'm going to be honest, I came in to take a look at that, so there was a discussion with, uh, Stephanie Miller and the courthouse, and I'm not sure who from the city was called. I know Larry Holmes, the pre-commissioner himself, Wayne, excuse me, Hunsinger. Excuse me, we're not contacted about the meeting. Randy Snyder called Larry Appleback, said he wanted permission to take all the trees down all hands. We, Larry didn't call me, there's no way that we, I, I'll fight that to him. And we can't allow him to take all that. So then, they suggested, do you mind taking, can we have permission to take every other tree? What courthouse is doing is remodeling the whole, that whole block is getting remodeled. I wasn't happy with every other, Stephanie Miller. So that would be a good thing for the trees that are still going to be standing there to bring their health back. You notice those trees are starting to really go together, a lot of bear spots in the focus. It's beautiful, Pam, just beautiful. Um, Larry Holmes and I both agreed to every other. From our understanding, the mayor, Wheeler, you gave him the permission and then you didn't, um, there's that six or that, like that. They were giving permission to take it down, but we, you know, I'm not, I'm not one finger flailing. We were brought in after. I would, so I'm going to be honest, I would argue.
But we have a tree commission here for a reason, and I don't know why some people in this building, apparently are allergic to trees anywhere downtown. Mayor, are you aware the county filled out for our ordinance, which I read last night, an application for permits removed from, to remove those trees, the permit from the tree commission?
Never let it on, on the trees, I didn't know that was bad.
You remember the tree commission, right?
Yeah.
We were not, I'm going to.
We were not involved in it.
Exactly, we were not notified.
We weren't notified though. Only thing we were notified is when the other, um, the guy from courthouse, not the other, Randy Cook. Called and said he wanted every tree down, and that's the first time I ever heard about it, and I said, we're not cutting every tree down. Now you're back to very willing downtown to me still. That was the only thing I've seen on it.
We are.
So, I mean, there is a random, well, it's changing somewhere.
I know, and that's, and that's what Trevor sent to us, Mr. Johnson sent to us after this came to our attention at the last meeting. He sent an email that I expressed concern, I got no feedback except for him the next day, that shared this random understanding, which includes removal of select trees, but an MOU doesn't, uh, how does the MOU interact with the establishment or tree commission? Why even have it? These folks are putting in their time and interest, and they're incredibly talented people, and we just completely disregard everything they say. And apparently, there's no actual formal process that I'm through with, uh, county president.
I wouldn't involve them.
You're the mayor.
Yeah.
The Safety Service Director takes care of that. Who was not even brought in on the conversation gate, I didn't know what happened, the election happened. Mayor, I call you mayor, please tell me something else besides. So the status of the tree, the street trees on that side, they're all down?
No.
Every other one?
That's what I mean.
The one that they planned to do were downtown?
The, the tree commission, we agree with it.
When did, when did the tree commission be?
We didn't meet on this.
Well, then how is the decision being made?
We need to ask the chairman.
What, uh? The tree commission doesn't have formal authority to enter the agreements with the county, that's a, that's a city hall function, Mayor.
I didn't agree with him. I didn't mean entering the agreement.
Okay, all right, I promise you. I hope we can all work together, Mayor said he want to work with council to be sure the downtown revitalization happens. I hope, I think it's been pretty clear, obviously, we have a legislative this, maybe we should consider it, have a, strengthen the tree commission, and if they don't agree, then so be it, there's ways, and we're, 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 we've escaped your decision, et cetera, but. This is getting ridiculous, there's, there's not a concerted effort to preserve trees, I understand Stephanie Miller said about Madison Street. It was a beautiful, beautiful block, the other side still is, but formal processes are in place for checks and balances. Clearly, that's not happening, and I hope it can just be signed without waiting for tree commissions to be established by the county. It's incredibly disappointing, I hope not.
We need to, we were, Stephanie, oh, Mr. Holmes, she was surprised that we're not.
Mr. Peterson, we, before, the citizens are there, and there are pressure, but you can remind of, uh, Stephanie Miller and.
Of course, the, uh, Ohio Department of Natural Resources, she is the Northwest Ohio representative, a tree representative, just put it wrongly. All right, Arbus, thank you, thank you. But, uh, she's, uh, she's wonderful, wonderful. She has wonderful information for us, and we need, she'll come to our city every time we need, all, all we have to do is ask. But I'm not, I'm going to reiterate again that we weren't invited to that meeting. Of course, we heard a little, I was running, inviting those, that's a street, side block, and I saw yellow dots of all the trees. It's snowballed.
Yes. Um, we got the email, Lee, and before we even had time to digest it, and he had one question to respond to, they were there cutting the trees on a Monday. Um, I had somebody ask me, you know, the reasoning was the health, and I know the tree commission, all the health has been opened, the canopies, so be it, and they started cutting, but the other side of the street now, those trees are not the same health issues. Um, there was a resident that lives on that side of the street, and I asked about that, and she actually told the guys, cutting the trees about it. And I'm a little frustrated because it was information, information, that information, that's the understanding, it was seventh of July, then there was something sent on the eleventh, we got the emails after the twenty-fourth meeting, there was a lack of communication, and then they just cut them on Monday, and we looked, there was this wall found, most of the sidewalks, it was terrific. Um, the shade is gone, and I can't go to the landscape, whatever, and there may not be people walking, we see it, and they're not driving by, and they think it's horrible. But now people on the other side, if those are cut, that would be a city expense, because of this actually, to, that the county has decided was my first feeling. And I don't know who to correct those questions to, or who is, who's able in this. I don't want the trees cut on the other side, but now we have this thing saying it's a health problem, we have trees.
No, it's, it's going, it's going to help, it's helping, so. Look, the trees on the west side of Madison Street, that, that's only scheduled to true that, and I'm going to take any of those trees. I don't know, but that's, that's, that's the, the nature of that. Thank you.
I got to explain it, uh, we talked about the trees on the courthouse property itself.
Between the, between the street and the sidewalks, the boulevard trees.
Right, okay, years back, Eric, I know, east side of there, there were a few big trees on the alley, right there, I never seen where it goes by, it was downtown. Those were marked red, they were supposed to be coming down. Last fall, it was, the one came down, took a telephone pole down, took a car, took two poles down.
That's not a city tree.
Huh?
That's not a city owned tree.
Yes, it is. It's in the, it's in the boulevard, between the street and sidewalk. They both are in between the street and sidewalk, both sides of the alley, right there. Not the one down the alley that came down this spring.
Oh, that's the one I thought you were talking about.
No, no, I'm talking about the one right out by the boulevard, but they're in, both of them are in boulevard. The one came down last fall and took out the telephone pole right there, and the one over the, uh, Sheriff's Department, or courthouse, parking lot. They took that telephone pole out, and then that, that tree was close to an, that's, second time, I think that, a branch broke off up there and came down on that tree, that's on the south side of the alley, and the north side of the alley, branch came down out of that once, and bore, and come down. And both trees were marked, it come down, and that was finished, God, five, six years ago, and they, and they're still there.
Thank you.
Madam, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to have a technical session with this person on, uh, firing. There would, uh, the firing department.
On target. Both are please follow up. Lee Beal?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Carter Philo?
Yes.
Jose Grayman?
Yes.
Carter Philo?
Yes.
Phil Grayman? Yes.
Madam President. Move the council to put a technical session.
Will the court please follow up? Lee Beal?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
And Phil Man?
Yes.
Jose Grayman?
Yes.
Carter Philo?
Yes.
Phil Grayman?
Yes.
General section? Thank you. Madam President, I move that this conference, not even doing, this, I was second to down, can you do all the papers? Bye.